Hey, good evening. I would like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. It is a very exciting special meeting. I'll go ahead and go through the motion and then we'll, uh, everybody can say a little bit and then Eric will turn it over to you. Um, so may I have a motion to appoint Dr. Eric Byrne as Superintendent of School? That's Sarah, seconded by Dennis. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Got it? Hi. I'm gonna start by boring everyone and actually doing what we're never supposed to do, but reading into the record, the reminder of, of, uh, what the board was looking for. We were looking for an inspirational, or the board and the community, excuse me, and thank you to the community, all of you. An inspirational, strategic, and innovative leader who sets high standards, holds self and others accountable, and is committed to maximizing the potential of every student. Possesses a deep understanding of how curriculum, instruction, and assessment combine to enhance student learning. Leads with confidence, conviction, courage, and integrity. Communicates clearly, honestly, and transparently with all segments of the school and the broader community. Is visible and accessible in the district schools and collaborates with and values the voice of stakeholders. Proactively and strategically addresses concerns before and as they arise, and skillfully manages the district's finances, effectively utilizes and deploys resources, and develops and sustains productive partnerships with local and state officials. Lastly, is excited about working in Darien and is committed to developing a shared vision for the future that builds upon the district's longstanding commitment to excellence. Eric has only been with us for a fairly short time, about four months. But we've seen all of those things in him. You're gonna hear a couple of people, uh, probably touch on that tonight. Um, but before I pass it to my board, I'll, I'll end by saying, true leaders bring out the best in everyone else. It's about their behavior and the way that behavior cascades through our district. When we look around, we as board members feel supported and confident, and we hear and see that our staff are happy and performing well, our administration and our teachers are thriving, and our families are feeling supported. And we're thrilled to have you here with us. Thank you. That, I'll turn it to Sarah and Dennis, who led our superintendent search committee.
Thanks, Jill. Um, Dennis and I, as the chairs of the search committee, are absolutely thrilled with the conclusion of this search. We began this process back on April 7th, um, when Dr. Ba- Dr. Byrne came into the interview for the interim position. And the excitement when he walked out of this room was palpable. I remember us saying, maybe he'll stay, maybe we can convince him not to retire. He seems great. Well, Dr. Byrne, looks like retirement is not in your future right now. Uh, over the past seven months, our board and our community has worked together to define exactly what we wanted in a leader. As it turned out, we did not have to look far. The person who met every single one of those qualities that Jill just read was already here, leading our district with dedication, integrity, and heart. We want to offer our heartfelt thanks to our community, to everybody who participated in the focus groups, the surveys, and everyone who shared their thoughts with Dr. Byrne with us. Your thoughtful input truly helped in this process and helped guide our decision. Uh, a special thank you to Rena Bader and Marty Brooks of School Leadership, whose wisdom and steady partnership helped make this search such a success. So with your leadership, Dr. Byrne, we know Darien's future is bright, and we cannot wait to work with you to see what's ahead.
Any other board member like to add anything? Oh, Dennis, go ahead.
First, I would like to congratulate Dr. Byrne. We are very excited, enthralled, elated, galvanized, even united, and also a bit relieved that we have our match. We could not be happier. As Sarah stated, we found the perfect match who's already sitting in the chair. I would like to thank Sarah for all the work she did on the search committee, because without her, we're not having this meeting tonight. I would also like to thank Rena and Marty as well for their guidance and counsel over the past few months. I would also like to thank Cass and Dr. Byrne for all they worked, the work they did behind the scenes. And lastly, I would like to thank the board. Thank you for all attending the meetings we had beyond the regular board requirements. Also, thank you for your candor, insights, and visions on how we can improve Darien schools for the future. The number one job of any board is to hire and evaluate the superintendent. We have had the past few months to evaluate and eventually hire a candidate. And speaking unbiased, I think, I think we nailed this one. Congratulations again, and thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Robin?
I don't wanna be repetitive, but Dr. Byrne, we are so happy to be able to welcome you as our next permanent superintendent. It be, it became very clear to me, and I think everyone on the board, over the past four months of working closely with you as a board, and also seeing how you listen to and engage with our parents, staff, and community members, that you embody the type of strong, forward-thinking, and decisive leadership that our community values and needs. I am personally looking forward, and I think the rest of the board as well, to collaborating with you on the important work that we have going forward and, um, that will guide our priorities over the next coming years. Thank you for partnering with us, and we're, we're looking forward to taking this exciting step next to together as a community. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh. Go ahead.
Um, later tonight, we're gonna be talking about the governance, uh, our, us doing better governance work. Um, and I remember when we first had that conversation at the very first meeting in July 22nd with you, Dr. Byrne, I, you know, governance work takes a lot of trust. And I said, how do you build that trust out of thin air? And you said competence. And I have to tell you, the competence coming out of you and your office, and that's coming now out of everyone that's working with you, has just been overwhelming. People have asked me, how is he really? And all I can say is, he's exactly what you think he is, and that is a wonderful thing. Thank you.
So I just wanted to talk about the serendipity nature, uh, that we found, Eric. And if many probably in this community don't know, but Eric's first connection with Darien was actually after our student tragedies in 2022, when some parents reached out to some administrators. One of those parents was a, uh, a Wave Strong founder, and that's Laura Bremer. And Eric was one of the administrators. So you fast forward three more years, um, I had a health issue that required me to start working out. Turns out, I go to Orange Theory, I see Laura, and we talk about school, Wave Strong, we talk about football team, the kids. And one day, she calls me out of the blue and said, did you see that guy Eric when, you know, before our workout? And I'm not very social, I just wanna get there, work out. And I don't really chit chat other people I know. And I said, no, I don't. Well, he's a superintendent awry. He's announced his retirement, and he's pretty young. Do you want me to call him to see if he's interested? And before she could ask me the question, I said, I'm calling Jill and Marge. So, long story short, Marge works her HR magic. We've, uh, we went all out with our recruitment effort. And for those that don't work out at Orange Theory, all out is sprinting, you hurt yourself as 53-year-olds, and you kinda compete against one another. Um, but we, that all out worked, and now we found our superintendent of schools. And so, Marge and the consultant said that the stars probably would not have aligned, but if it had not been the quick nature of Laura, who couldn't be here tonight, but I think she's dialed in from, uh, remotely, and, and just reaching out, like having that community outreach and jumping on an opportunity. And so, it's, it's basically proof that the best results come from connection, grace, shared purpose, and, as I said, a healthy dose of serendipity. So these last seven months, I mean, I've done this for a long time. I've been like a seven-month all-out. I mean, but it's been both exhausting and so rewarding. So, knowing that this group's gonna have to work out with Eric, I've gotten our, got some Orange Theory workouts. So good luck with him. Yes, you too. But, uh, truly, uh, welcome, Dr. Byrne. I'm confident that the district is in very healthy hands. So, thank you.
Eric, would you like to add anything?
Well, first, thank you, thank you, thank you. It, it's an honor to have been selected to serve as the superintendent of the Darien Public Schools. Thank you to the board for your incre- this incredible opportunity and putting your trust and confidence in me. It's been a privilege to be a part of this district for the last four months, and I'm excited to continue working alongside our incredible administrators, our dedicated faculty and staff, our supportive community and the board to make Darien the very best district we can be. The vision of the graduate, which was developed, I think, about five years ago, drives educational excellence and is unique to our district. It focuses the work that we do with our students on the skills they need in order to solve the complex challenges that we face today and that we will face in the future. It not only speaks to specific academic skills that are necessary, like communication, critical thinking, and creative problem solving, but it also prioritizes empathy, integrity, and independence. So we are fostering well-rounded growth within all of our students. Overall, the vision reflects the deep investment we all have in our schools, and I'm committed to continuing that important work together. As an educator, I believe deeply that students must remain at the center of all that we do. Our curriculum programs should not only reflect who they are today, but also who they have the potential to become. As our district continues to grow and evolve, we will create meaningful opportunities for students to have a voice in our work, ensuring they see themselves reflected in our classrooms and feel a deep sense of belonging in every school building. This will be the foundation of our path forward. I'd like to acknowledge my family tonight. My wife Andrea's here in the back of the room, and my daughter Hannah, who provide inspiration and support to the work that I do every day. I'm a better person and educator because of all that they have taught and given to me. Thank you, Hannah. Thank you so much for the warm welcome this evening, the words of confidence. I'm deeply grateful and incredibly excited to take on this new role with this new team. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. We'll close this meeting, people can visit for a few minutes, and then our next meeting starts at 7:30. Uh, so with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? That's Sarah, seconded by John. All those in favor, that's unanimous, and we'll start up again at 7:30. Thank you, everyone who came to see this part of the evening. That's better. All right. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, November 11th at 7:30 PM. That's a reminder to board members, we had talked about the possibility of a meeting on the 5th, but not everyone is available, so your next meeting will be on the 11th. Um, okay, I'll go to the chairperson's report. On the Board of Ed, there are three years. There's, of course, the calendar year that we all celebrate, the academic year that starts July 7th, and there's the election term. Tonight marks the end of my, oh, boy, worse than Julie, end of my nine-year term and of John's six-year term. I have so much that I'm proud of this nine last, last nine years that the Board of Ed has accomplished. Uh, this board has worked on strategic planning. We've been working gradually on the budget process. I can't wait to talk more about it tonight. We've been establishing effective and collaborative relationships with our fellow government bodies. Um, some of them are here tonight, thank you. We've done amazing work on our facilities, including the expansion of the high school cafeteria, the beautiful new Ox Ridge building, which we accept tonight, finally formally, and of course, the Hinley Homes and Royal work, which is ongoing. Um, through it all, underlies the work we've done for our students. Our vision, which we put in place a couple of years ago, preparing all students today to thrive in a changing world tomorrow. I am so proud of that mission because I love that it's focused on lifelong learning. Never gonna get through this. Um, and I love that we are talking about all students, every single one who comes into our doors. We care about them all, and we're working with them all, and we will meet them all where they are. Thank you to my board, who sit up here week after week with me. Uh, thank you to the administration and staff who also do that. Thank you to the teachers who work with all of our students and all of the other staff members you don't see up here, who, uh, do our IT, film these meetings, uh, make sure that they're scheduled, like Cass. Um, thank you. I'd also like to say thank you to the few, of the other people you don't see. The mentors who help me think through complex questions. The friends who remind me that I've forgotten something, like a child, or lend an ear when the going gets tough. I'd like to thank my four sons for the nights of cold supper, the times they've been forgotten somewhere. Um, and for homework they've done on their own. It's good for them. I'd like to thank my husband Jeff for his unwavering support and his belief in me. Sorry. Lastly, I'd like to thank you, the community, for the opportunity to serve in this role. It has been a true honor. And I'll see the rest of my time to John, who will not cry his way through it.
I'll see, I'll see. Um, so this is seven years of serving Darien through government. Um, and Election Day, I think I, I might be a free agent. Um, so tonight's been one of the best meetings that I've served on. Um, I think it rivals maybe the Planning and Zoning Commission, where we approved the Darien High School lights, which is a multi-decade battle, but this comes pretty close. And thanks, Dr. Byrne, for making it. Um, also, thank you to my wife, Michelle, and our three boys, Luke, Connor, and Jake, for putting up with the thousands of hours that I've put into this town and meetings over the years. When I first told Michelle, who's a former Ox Ridge, uh, PTO co-chair, that I wanted to run for the Board of Education, she quit. Oh, man, that's not the right board for you. And then a good buddy told me, I need the Board of Ed, like I need a hole in my head, and I ended up getting one of those along the way, too. Um, so I'm just gonna leave you a quick personal story, and I think I've said it here, but I think it, it bears repeating over and over again. I've done it throughout town these last couple of years. But, um, a couple of years ago, I brought my father down to Clemson. That's where my three sons attended. And for, is my dad's first big-time college football game, but Pop was more in awe of how well the boys were doing, including the two engineers, because my father tried engineering at Lehigh and couldn't cut it and became an accountant. So his, he said, how are you guys doing so well in your classes? And without missing a beat, my oldest Luke replied, Pop, it's got me. They taught us how to learn in Darien. We have a huge leg up on most of our classmates here. That simple line, "They taught us how to learn," has stuck with me ever since. My son's experience echo what I've heard from countless other proud parents in kind of my John right now, ones with gray hair, with graduates that are all products of the Darien School education. Um, so my parting plea to this board and our broader Darien community is this. Avoid the perilous distractions, the negative national headlines, which you mentioned earlier. Um, even culture wars, the private text chains, the anonymous websites. They only serve to distract and divide our tightly-knit community. Instead, focus on what truly matters, our students' experience, achievement, and outcomes. Ultimately, their overall preparedness for life after high school. If you keep your eyes on those core items, I promise, with the support of these guys here at the table and everybody behind them in the educational staff, you'll also be proud of your own DHS grad. So, roll Wave.
Thank you, John. Okay. Public comment.
If anyone would like to participate in public comment, please approach the podium and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and address for the record, and note that you have up to three minutes to comment.
My name is Michael Burke. I live at 15 Lake Drive here in Darien. Uh, I'm currently a member of Board of Selectmen, uh, speaking in my own capacity, but I suspect my colleagues would absolutely endorse, uh, what I have to say. First, to Dr. Byrne, congratulations. Uh, I know you will be a great asset to the town. We, uh, will love working with you, and I will say that having someone with a Westchester County background is a big, uh, is a big plus. So, uh, we look forward to you. Uh, to Jill, I was at her very first meeting nine years ago, and that she ultimately became chair is absolutely not surprising. And even, uh, when we were just, uh, colleague members, you could see your, uh, leadership. You could see that you cared about children, and that was always your, uh, guidepost. And, uh, you know what? It will be tough shoes to, uh, tough shoes to fill, but I'm sure this, uh, group will, uh, figure, figure that out. Uh, to John Seeny, who, uh, was also here on his first day, and we were football dads together and pickleball compacts, uh, now. Uh, John was the, uh, perfect person to get on this board and, uh, and mix things up. And, uh, we agreed most of the time, but there was never any doubt that what John really cared about were these, were these kids. He cared about the, you know, his wife, Michelle, who clothed in football gear thousands, uh, was all about Darien. And, you know, for John, uh, you know, his initial gift as he was coming onto this board were the, uh, lights, and his parting gift is a wonderful superintendent. So, uh, my thanks to you, and I think it's 17 years and counting. My colleagues and I are trying to figure out something else for you, and I think we'll come up with something. But thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a little minute since I've been behind a podium, so, um, I'm so proud of the work that this board in particular has done. You've really risen to the challenge of showing us all how to come together, how to put aside partisan politics and do what's right for the kids of Darien. I'm standing here today as a proud grandmother of four kids and looking through the lens of my five children, who've all gone through the Darien Public School system, who now have children. And they're looking back and saying, wow, we were so lucky to grow up in a place that put student learning at the forefront. And I want you all to know how important your work really is, because our community as a whole wouldn't be as successful as we are if our education system wasn't as exceptional as it is. And that's because each and every one of you. And Dr. Byrne, I want to welcome you to Darien. I'm sorry we didn't have an opportunity to work together when I was first selectman, but I did have the joy of working with both Jill and John and many others around this table. So, um, I am deeply, deeply grateful to all of you, and thank you for your leadership and for the role models that you are for the rest of our community.
Thank you, gentlemen. Up to you.
I'm Terry Wood, 50 St. Nicholas Road, longtime resident of Darien, 50 years, actually. Uh, welcome, Dr. Byrne. I'm super excited about everything I've heard about you. And I echo so many comments that Jamie just mentioned. Um, I did serve as state rep for 14 years and worked extensively with Jill on legislation, on the details of it, and coming up to Hartford and hosting her. And a number, and Sarah Parent, I remember hosting you as well when you came to Hartford. Can't remember what the issue was, but something on education. And grateful for everyone's work here, and I know how hard it is to, on certain hotbed issues, keep calm, and you guys do. And I'm so appreciative of that. But certainly, John Seeny and Jill, I've known closely over a number of years, and deeply grateful for your service to the community, your sense of humor, your intelligence, your integrity, and God bless, and thank you all for serving.
Thanks.
Thank you, Terry. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for those comments. We appreciate them. And with that, I will move to the superintendent's report. But of course, we're not in our last meeting, so I'll take a moment to note. Thank you for agreeing to be our superintendent, not just for now, but into the future. And for those who did not tune in at 7 o'clock, Dr. Byrne has agreed to be our permanent superintendent, and this board is absolutely thrilled, as is our community and our staff.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, and thank you all for joining us for the October 28th Board of Education meeting. We have a number of important discussions this evening, so I will keep my report brief. Last night, I spent the evening as a dinner guest at ABC House here in Darien. It was wonderful to meet the students who have added so much to the Darien community through their participation in the ABC program. Sarah, thank you for coordinating and getting me the invite. Had a wonderful morning today, visiting Tokeneet and Darien High School. Had the opportunity to visit classrooms, talk with students and teachers, and even with Ms. Dunn, participate in a science experiment in Ms. Keeler's AP Bio Club. Fortunately, we survived, uh, without After Effects. I invite all members of the community to our inaugural Superintendent's Fireside Chat on Wednesday, November 12th at 7:00 PM at Holmes Elementary School. This will be an engaging and formal discussion centered on the three Cs of our vision of a graduate, communication, creativity, and curiosity. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Eric. Student representative reports, Ryan and Kylie.
Yeah, so first of all, congratulations, Dr. Byrne, for being our permanent superintendent now. Uh, I feel our future is very bright and promising, both on this board and, and our community with you at the helm. Uh, to Ms. McCammon and Mr. Seeny, um, I mean, I've only been with you guys for a year, but thank you and congratulations for everything you guys have done in your time here. Um, as Mr. Seeny described, this job can be difficult and thankless at times, but I don't think there's anyone else that could prepare our students, including me and Kylie, for the future endeavors that we have ahead of us. So, thank you. Um, on to some other news. Uh, our students, our DHS students ran our trunker, our fifth annual trunk-or-treat this weekend. Uh, were many, uh, young stu- young students in Darien, uh, got many different candies and prizes, so that was very fun. Uh, our students, our sophomores and juniors have their PSAT tomorrow, so good luck with that. And, uh, tomorrow, yeah. Yeah. Point two years for a little sleep and break, so not too bad. And then, um, tomorrow as well, our girls swim and girls field hockey both have, uh, important FCAC matches tomorrow, and many other sports, uh, including boys and girl sports have many other state and FCAC matches in the rest of the week.
Um, first of all, I want to say congratulations to Dr. Byrne. I'm so excited to see what you do on this board. Um, and although I haven't been here for a while, congratulations to Mr. Seeny and, uh, Ms. McCammon. Um, you guys have been amazing from what I've seen of you all, and I'm so sad I couldn't have more time with you both. Um, recently, we had a choir concert, which you may have heard about from Dr. Byrne's Community Update Letter. Um, we have more upcoming concerts in band and orchestra. Um, I'm looking forward to the PSAT tomorrow morning. And I am looking forward to the new quarter.
Thank you both, and thank you for your kind words. Okay. Presentations, discussions, and possible actions. So we'll start with the proposed new courses for Darien High School for the 26, 27 school year. Dr. Fadyan and Ms. Dunn.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mrs. Dunn. We recently had a presentation on the new course proposals, um, at the Board of Education Curriculum Committee, and we wrote a committee report that was in, um, last board packet. And Mrs. Dunn is here tonight to talk about the new course proposal and some level changes that I think were anticipated by the board based on conversations we've had across the departments, um, to bring some consistency there. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you. Um, so I think three out of the four courses are, um, as we said at the last meeting, our courses that you expected to see and, um, have been, uh, projected forward in, in previous meetings. Um, I will focus on, first, the honors were a Western Civ course, as well as the French II honors course. Um, as you know, over the last couple of years, we've been replacing the accelerated courses in the ninth grade with honors courses. Um, and so the final two changes are, um, a part of this presentation tonight. The Western Civ course going forward as an honors version of our ninth-grade history course, and the French II accelerated becomes French II honors. Um, those are courses that we have discussed previously, and, um, we believe the move to ninth-grade honors program is consistent now across all subject areas. Um, the discussion that we had, um, at the early October meeting was also for us to continue to be sending the message, uh, forward about balance. And the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade is, um, one that should be done carefully and in a supported way. And so, we want to make sure that, um, we would recommend, very few students would, would sit for honors courses across the board. And so what we would like to see is the opportunity for students to think about those subjects that, at least right now, in eighth grade, that changes a lot, but that those are, that they're passionate about, interested in, um, and really would like to pursue at that level. Um, understanding that as one goes from ninth grade to 12th grade, so many things change, and, and the ability to take on more challenge and rigor is something that, um, many, many students will experience. And so that can happen gradually, rather than all in one fell And so that can happen gradually rather than all in one fell swoop from eighth grade to ninth grade. The third course is the American Sign Language course. This is the final stage of American Sign Language in Level Four. It completes the cycle for any student who wants to treat American Sign Language as their world language, so that they have four full years at DHS. And this year, students who feel that they would like to pursue it can sit for a seal of literacy in American Sign Language as well. So we're excited to close that four-year loop. And the fourth course, many times over the years, you have seen our English department bring forward new and exciting electives in literature. They spend every year, a part of their year, looking at the courses we offer, thinking about those classes that may not be getting enrollment, and thinking about some alternatives for students who want to pursue something that might be a little bit different in that senior year course. And so the East Asian literature, unfortunately, is a course that has not seen enrollment in the last few years. And so the English department brings forward punchlines and perspectives. The hu-, the humor genre, we think many students will find this exciting and also will appeal to some of our performance students as well, our theater students. So we're very excited to bring all four forward and happy to take any questions you have.
Board questions?
I would just say that at the curriculum committee meeting last week, whenever it was, the curriculum committee approved these these courses and think they should be voted on by the full board. And I also just wanted to clarify something that we talked about in the curriculum committee about the Western Civ course. And there were some questions about what whether the current 300 level course will change. Can you just speak to that? Because I know that it's a hot button topic.
Yes, I mean, anytime you you create a course at the honors level, you know that you will be setting expectations that are a little bit different, pacing, I think depth of content, some of the writing and assessments that we would be using in that course. And so it would it would align with many of the other honors courses at the school.
Was that the question that came up?
It was basically because Western Civ has been known to be a very challenging class for many students. And the question is whether the the current course would be, you know, less challenging or would it, but it, Mr. Capera basically said it would be a very similar cadence to what it is now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions?
First, language. We talked a little bit about managing how students are taking language. I'm all for ASL four. I'm super excited to see that. Does that mean we have to start adjusting anything down in terms of the other languages? Or are we still at the point where this makes little impacts on any of our other language progressions?
We'll continue to monitor that as students have enrollment selection coming up late winter, early spring. Naturally, if students are shifting from one course to another, seats open up in one of the other languages. So that's something that we'll continue to look at and apprise the board of as we move forward.
Okay.
Looking at the total FTE count.
Dennis.
You mentioned that the ASL would be the final time or final. Is there any thoughts of having honors or AP ASL?
I don't think so. I don't know that there's an AP version of the ASL offered yet. It's something I can check on, Dennis. It's, as students enter the high school, it is currently at least their first year in ninth grade. And so typically, they wouldn't get to a fifth year. With our other languages, many times they're beginning prior to high school. So with Mandarin and French and Spanish, they're coming into the high school at the second level or sometimes the third level. And so the AP courses are then more available to those students. But I have not heard of an AP. ASL doesn't mean that there won't be one because there's an AP pretty much of everything you can think of at this point.
And in line with that thinking, we will be looking next to accelerate the Mandarin course sequence so that there will be an offering for AP Mandarin. So that will be something that the board can expect around this time next year.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to approve the proposed new courses for Darien High School for the 26, 26, 27 school year as presented? Joanna seconded by Greg. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And may I say before I go, thank you, Jill, and thank you, John, for your steadfast love of our faculty and students over the years. We appreciate it deeply.
Thank you.
Okay, book discussion on the Governance Core. Eric, you're up.
All right. So everybody had their homework on the board. And for those who have not seen one of these before, over the summer at our July retreat, the board actually engaged in a practice of this book talk, just like our kids do in their classrooms, in reading a book called The Governance Core, which is to help school boards and superintendents and school districts become more effective and efficient in their work. We had a great discussion back in July using Chapter Two. And so tonight's purpose is to talk through the remainder of the book. We did have a protocol that we put in place. And I know that we very quickly shifted away from the protocol over the summer to have more of a general discussion. So what I would like to suggest, and oh, good, we have the protocol right here. Because of the rounds and the number of people, I think what I would like to suggest is if we think about the four A's, assumptions, agree, argue, and aspire, we could open it up to anyone at the table that likes to, would like to pick one of those four A's and a section of text to share and then talk about, gee, what, what were the implications for our work as you were reading that and thinking about that? So maybe we could start with the assumptions piece, if there's anyone that has any assumptions that they'd like to bring up that the author of the text holds as you're reading through this.
We can't say the dog ate our homework?
No, you cannot. Well, I thought in the beginning of Chapter Three, he says, basically, he's talking about successful superintendents. It's not that they approach governance, excuse me, it is that they approach governance as a key function of the district, not as something to control or ignore, but as something to support as a critical part of the education system. And what I thought was important about that is, is that, that we think of, we talk about wanting to think about education, but we also need to think about through the lens of governance, because it's really easy to get dragged down into the details of wanting to know exactly how that phonics program works, Amy, or exactly which special ed intervention we're using for XYZ, surely. But that's not really the role. So how we marry the love of and our passion for education with this notion of governance and how that yields success.
Thoughts?
I'll, I'll build on that. And so when it talked about the shared internal moral compass, a few pages later, I have five stars next to this. It says, "All the board trainings and exhortations against micromanagement and dysfunction will never replace a board's belief in the honesty, competency, and moral purpose of their superintendent." And that really rang true for me, especially this evening when we appointed you as our permanent superintendent, because there is, you have been nothing but honest and nothing but competent. And I think our trust level is, is the highest in this five years that I've sat at this board. So to me, that shared internal moral compass has increased in the past four months, and I hope that it will continue to do so. And hopefully that gets us out of the weeds.
Greg?
Just adding on to what Sarah said, just in terms of the trust piece. I mean, for me, like going into the relationship with, this may be a fault of mine, but with any person, I always give them trust unless proven otherwise. And you've demonstrated that trust time and time again with transparency, with honesty, and with open arms to the community, which I think is a great testament to the, you know, the early quick start that you've had in the community.
Anybody else on assumptions?
Well, I just, I, I wanted to just highlight something that stood out to me. It was on page 21 about guidelines for serving on the board that I thought was helpful in terms of reserve judgment, listen empathetically, stay focused on content, always be true to the norms of the board, treat every trustee with respect, demonstrate and demonstrate the core values of the board, do not take differences personally. And then irreconcilable differences or behaviors. We need to kind of work together to try to figure out how we can come to an agreement and consensus and collaborate so that we can kind of move forward to achieve the goals and objectives.
Greg, dovetail on that. You know, one of the, the teach, they taught us how to learn, but the effective school board governance makes huge differences in long-term success of the quality of the education programs. So as I reflect back, you know, on his life in the last six years flies by, and I was probably guilty of it sometimes, you have some of the nonsense that, you know, we'd spend time on or trying to figure out, you know, how to get to a certain place without the right leadership directing us, you know, took away from all the good that we can be doing. So I think, you know, with the right leadership in place and the right mindset, you know, it definitely filters down to the kids.
I think it's important in talking about assumptions that this book is definitely written with the assumption that people want to be the best board member that they can, that boards want to work collaboratively together, that they want to find cohesion and all the other terms that are in here. And, you know, along the way, they, they pick out a couple instances of like when things get, might get rocky or when someone's not holding their duty. And I think that in the past couple of months, we have made huge strides to getting our, our superintendent thinking along the ways that we want it to. And I think that now's the time for us to really turn and focus our look at how we can make our board function as well. And, you know, coming back to that assumption, wouldn't it be nice if, if all nine board members shared that same desire and felt that way equally to, to come to the table, you know, at each meeting and also to do the work in between without silos, without, you know, different levels of information and responsibilities? So I think that would be really nice.
It did, rereading, for me, it brought me back to some of the conversation over the summer, which is that this is something that we'll have to continue to work at. It, it just, it isn't, you read the book once, you get it, and it all works. We're, we're gonna have to have the conversations regularly. And there's a whole bunch of other pieces in there that I, I love that when you get to the back of the book, they talk about a handbook and having a board handbook. Boy, pretty good timing tonight that we're gonna talk about that later. It talks about, you know, deepening your understanding as a board and spending time going out into the schools and learning it, what it is that we're doing. So figuring out those structures that we, as we've talked about and being able to do that is really important. So it's, it's really a commitment to, and I, and I think Fulham's making that same assumption, that everybody wants to be in that place and everybody wants to continue to work at that, which is really important. What do you agree about? Oh, I'm sorry, Rob. Go ahead.
One, just one additional comment, something that stood out to me. And this is on page 98. "A unified board is made up of individuals with different beliefs, styles, and personalities, working together in a collaborative, cooperative, trusting fashion with a shared moral imperative toward common strategic goals." And I think that the common strategic goal and finding unity in that is a really powerful tool to use to try to address when you have divisions or different beliefs among different board members. And I would aspire to getting to kind of what we would aspire to, to be able to work together collaboratively and build that trust so that even if people have different beliefs, which is fine, we can kind of come to a compromise and work collaborator, collaboratively, sorry, together so that we can achieve our strategic goals that we all share, which is ultimately about achievement and outcomes for the students.
I'm moving on to the agree area, if that's okay. One thing that really struck me that I think, and Rob sort of alluded to it right now, is on page 102, they talk about how collaboration moves at the speed of trust and that coherence is hard to get. And even once you get it, it's hard to maintain. And I feel like that is something that we've had a problem with again and again. And we will have to start checking in with each other more, talking about things more, making more compromises as we build more trust, you know, with the superintendent and then within ourselves, rather than just expecting everybody to get along, go along, to get along.
And I, I think that's important to, as at this point in time, to note with two new board members coming on, because one of the most challenging things about being on the board is that sometimes votes predate you. And so, you know, you come onto the board and it's, it's someone that's been hired or it's a document that's been adopted or, or it's, you know, a financial construct that you may or may not like, that board members have to live with for a period of time. And that can be very challenging to navigate. But people have to accept that when you come onto the board, you, the, what the board has voted on is what the board does. And it doesn't mean you don't ever change the board, but you have to live with it until you can find a way to change it. Building on what both Katie and Joanna said, that Dennis and I were chatting today, we both used the word cross pollination and that we need to like all, everybody, the nine of us need to talk to the nine of us and make sure, outside of the board table, to make sure that we all know where we're coming from and get the point of view. And, and I think it's easy to get siloed and to continue to talk, you know, human nature is you talk to people you feel comfortable talking to, right? So if there are those that you don't know as well, like that, that's a goal for my, for the upcoming year for me, is to make sure that I'm cross pollinating and checking in with everybody. Yeah. And I think probably we'd find that post-COVID, that's difficult a lot more places than not because people really did silo. And it's nice to feel the community knitting back together.
One of the things I agreed with on page 159, a fool with a tool is still a fool. But seriously, I think, kind of building on what, what everyone is saying here, one of the things which really struck me was, there's a paragraph on page 59 that says, "The problem for many trustees is while they recognize negative behavior in others, they often don't see the same behavior in themselves." And I think that's something, you know, that we need to communicate with others and say, look, you know, I don't think there's personal attacks are meant to be personal. I think some, you know, the previous paragraph talks about, you know, some people say, "Good morning." Other people are like, "Good morning." And, and, you know, and it's still the same words, but someone's not interpreting it the same, maybe the way you, you think you're insane or not. And I think we just need to be, to have, to go that extra step to have those discussions. And so now I'm kind of going into aspire, but I agree with the part in how I think we need to aspire to that extra step.
Thought it was interesting when they talked about going back and watching board meetings with the sound turned off, just to see.
Your body like.
Yes, you would.
Greg?
Yeah, I think as we're, some of what Sarah was saying in terms of collaboration and talking with each other, I think is really important going forward, especially with two new board members coming on board. And when we're in this room, I think it's really important for us to make sure that we're wearing our board hats, meaning while we're here, remember we're elected by the town, we're elected officials, we're representing the town. And at the end of the day, we can have disagreements about different issues. And I use this in, in business a lot. Agreement is optional, commitment is not. And I think for us as board members, we have to remember that. Once we vote, as Jill said, we need to commit. And we're all, we all have to commit to the same thing once we've made that vote.
Anything to argue with in the text? Go ahead, Katie.
This isn't actually an argument, but it is a question for if it's a possibility for us, which is the notion of discussion slash conversation meetings. This was mentioned throughout the book on page 81, 121, 162. And for the public, maybe who wasn't reading along, the idea was that the board typically follows very structured, very formal meetings through Robert's rules and through, you know, recognized speaker and that there's really a lot of discussion and information gaining that needs to happen behind the scenes. So was talking about the idea of if open meetings are allowed and how to kind of structure them so that it's still transparent, still, you know, available to the public, but remove some of that formality and structure to facilitate conversation. And I'm, and then there also was another example of study sessions, which I thought was really interesting considering how late our past meetings would go on really in-depth presentations. So I was curious, Eric, just to ask you what your thought was around that option for us?
Yeah, it's actually a structure I think you want to work toward. You want to get into the rhythm of the meeting and the collaboration of the board and really get the governance piece set and. you want to get into the rhythm of the meeting and the collaboration of the board and really get the governance piece set and running well. But I think it it is an option that exists and is something that happens. So you know, in New York, there is a common structure called a board work session. And then there's a board business meeting. So there's no, it's literally like a study session. It's a discussion session about um a particular topic or topics, but there's no business done. So there's no votes, there none of that. And it's all done in public same way. Um, and I think it's a really interesting when the board feels like we're ready for this kind of discussion. I think it's certainly a worthy endeavor to think about. You want to structure it so that you still, you know, you still always want to have some kind of structure so that it keeps us on task. But um, I think it absolutely is a worthy option down the road for us to think about.
I think one of the things that I would argue, and I guess it's the great way to say it, is on page eighty seven, it says, an early lesson for new trustees is realizing that they can never take off their board hat as long as they are under board. In everyone's mind, a trustee will always be a trustee and has has ability, special information, and also has the ability to exercise power in a school district. But then in most of the book, it's talking about how we're one of X number. So I find that in conflict to me and and yes, and I also think at some point you can take off your board hat and say, look, I'm a citizen here and or I'm a parent and and you have to be, I'll have to. I I I struggle with this part that we're always a board member. And I would argue that.
I think we're always board members, but the, you know, the example here of your words have impacts like a casual comment at a cocktail party. I I think the other, we may not view it as, you know, we're we have our board hat on, but I think the the way others view us is, you know, we're always reading into what other we're saying.
But I think we have to be able to let our guard down and be humans and people, you know, and not always be at the board taste.
Well, I often will actually literally say, I'm taking my board hat off for a minute. Um, or I'm going to be a parent in this moment because sometimes I I do think that um members of the public, your friends, your family, whoever um may think that they're talking to you in a formal capacity and may because in some ways they always are because we're always listening, right? If we're doing our job, we're always wanting to hear what's going on around us, trying to understand. So anyway, but I I agree with you. Sometimes it's nice just to feel like a human being. So um that is usually how I handle it.
But it says you can't take your word off. Even so, my question is, can we can we announce it and take it off?
I think I think Sarah's point is that often it's it's not you that's taking the hat off or not. It's how people perceive you. So when you're in the, you know, the the grocery, the uh produce section of Whole Foods um, and someone's approaching you, they may be approaching you thinking, oh, that's Dennis Maroni. He's on the board of Ed and I really want to talk to him about something. And and I I know board members who have done this and I I've done it as a a principal, uh because I was a principal of the school in the town where we lived, which may have been a dicey idea, but um and going to the town pool was just a terrible idea in August as a principal in that town. But same, uh, you know, I'm not a board member right now. I'll speak to you as a parent and and I in as a superintendent many times said, I'm going to take off my superintendent hat and just talk to you as a parent who's been through this uh before. Uh, and I think sometimes that helps it because you could want to be that all the time, but if the folks that we're talking to, they need to understand that you you're going to be that in that moment. And I think that's helpful.
I would also just say that I think it's important for us to um assume that the authors probably had some context in mind too, that um you know, they they probably weren't talking about pillow talk with your spouse. And yet, you know, putting something in writing or online and not signing your title as a board member doesn't change the fact that you are a board member. And I think there's a big distinction between and private informal conversation and and anything that is made public.
There's a really good book called The Corner Office that many of you have probably read, which speaks to a lot of it for people who are in leadership roles, how your organization sees you. It's a very powerful read if you finished with this and ready for something next, then you have a lot of flying you do. So, you know, or you could listen to it. It's a terrific book. How about the aspirational section of the Joanne?
Um, one of the parts that really uh I would hope we could aspire to as a board is uh towards the back in um under distractions and challenges to coherence, especially uh the part where uh on page one nineteen, uh, the trustee with a governance mindset is informed by the legal experience, but understands that they are not the organizational attorney. I would not attempt to impose a legal opinion. And they go on to say a similar example, uh, if you're like a HR professional, you don't, so you um, I find we often lean back on our background in both good ways and bad ways. You know, my my husband's a lawyer. He always says to me, you know, if someone uh calls me up to if get, you know, if someone is in jail and calls me up for advice, I'm going to tell them to call a lawyer because, you know, I work in mergers and acquisitions, but I don't know what to tell you. So uh, I I feel like that's a good way um to operate here um without getting over involved um and staying in the governor's position rather than, you know, helping write the job description or that kind of thing.
Katie. Um, on page fifty three, they end also later in the book, they talk about how one of the board's most valuable activities is visiting schools.
Is what?
Is visiting schools.
Yeah.
And I think that this has been a real deficit that this board has had for a while um in that we are in public in this very formal setting and we have really not um worked to create opportunities for us to engage in um sanctioned ways. And um, you know, we've talked about that a little bit over the years, but that is something that I would really like to see us work on. And I think most importantly, aside from the importance of connecting with the community members, um, being in the schools means that we're seeing the students and having that close reminder about why and what we're doing. Um, I really can't think of a better way.
Yeah. And I agree. And I've said this over the summer, this is definitely an aspirational piece. Because I think, you know, we're doing a lot of work, um, helping the community understand the work of this board and this governance team and helping our teachers to understand if we're doing a a visit with a couple of board members and looking specifically at something, it's to deepen your understanding. It's not an evaluation of folks. And so I I think that's something we can aspire to and work toward. I I think it's very realistic to see it not too far down the road. Um, because it's important work. And when our when our community sees that level of commitment and that level of depth of understanding, it really elevates the work uh to a new level. And I I think it's just helping our building administrators and our teachers understand why are we doing this? What are we doing? Because there will be fear. Um, and and they have to, they have to trust that why we're coming is about deepening your learning to be more effective in your role on the governance team. And and we can get there. I'm sure we can get there.
I can add, I can add on to that if it's okay. Um, I have a different book. Do you guys same content, just different page numbers? So I can't orient you to the page number, but this says the successes of any leaders are determined in large part by the manner in which they carry out their leadership. One of the most important and often least appreciated traits of highly effective trustees is management of their public behavior. And I would maybe not argue, but extend here. I think it's not just management of public behavior, but also private behavior. And I think when your public behavior and your private behavior are in sync, there's a little bit more authenticity. One of our goals will to be to be to um de-privatize practice of teaching and learning. And so as Eric mentioned, we are thinking about systems and structures and how to um maybe provide an opportunity for the board uh members to go out and see some things in action, maybe in December, it's released December. So we'll look forward to that. It's exciting.
I go, because I'm I'm kind of on this leadership point as well. And and kind of what Greg was saying, and you know, you need, you need to be committed to this. And one of the things which really struck me and and I think it's um, you know, I don't think anyone runs for public office who doesn't think they have some skills to to offer a board. And on page one eighteen, it says leaders are leaders are wanted on the board, but the board cannot be led in five or seven directions. Learning how to channel that leadership is a major challenge for trustees. It goes on to talk about how you have to have a joint leadership. And I think we need to aspire to to that and and not have a leader, you know, we need to be a collective leaders.
Robyn. Um, I'm jumping more toward the end on page one twenty seven. So the governance responsibilities, and this is something that I would want to aspire to. Um, and it's talking about it in the green box. The board needs to adopt well-developed, easily understood, measurable strategic goals and success indicators designed to achieve the moral imperative. I'm also kind of looking ahead because we will be talking about a new strategic plan for the next five years. And one thing that was interesting in the bottom paragraph there is that um in districts with higher levels of student achievement, the local boards of education are aligned and supportive on the non-negotiable goals for achievement and instruction and take care to make sure that other initiatives do not detract attention or resources from accomplishing those goals. And then uh tied to that, if you skip forward to one thirty one, it's talking about the budget and fiduciary responsibility and basically saying that the budget is almost like a policy document in that the resources need to be aligned with the strategic plan. And if it's not in the budget, it probably will not get done. So as we now are going to be talking about it, but in the next few months, I think that is something we need to keep in mind. And we need to make sure that we are giving the resources that will achieve our strategic goals.
Any closing thoughts?
What's our next book?
Well, we could think about that. Um, I I do think um the notion of how we, I think over the next few months, uh, when the new board is seated, we should certainly begin thinking about, well, what does this look like for the board's growth in the summer retreat? Um, I know in July, we talked about a possible mid-year retreat. I think those are the kinds of decisions we need to make because it's like, you know, if you build a campfire, if you build a fire and your fire pit out back and you're not feeding it wood, that that's what we're going to be doing here. We have to nurture this work of governance. And so I think collectively, we could think about what that looks like. I know we did talk about how do you structure retreats so that it really is a retreat that's reflective and growth minded about our work as a governance team. And that's certainly something we can look at um going forward. But but I appreciate you indulging. I I said this in July, I I thought this would be a fun experiment. I think it 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 really was a a great way for us to come together as a a governance team. And I I know I learned a lot about us and all of you. And I think it really helps to frame our work moving forward. So we'll definitely find some good books.
Great.
Before, I think I think in October tradition of a book talk is always a good one.
Okay, thank you all. We will move on to the discussion and possible action on the proposed contract agreement with the Darian Education Association. Exciting.
Okay, so um, we just have a few brief slides um before the board considers this uh contract for approval. I'd first like to to thank the board negotiations team for their efforts and wisdom and thought and conversation throughout the process. Um, Marge and Rich for your incredible expertise and thinking as we work through it and and Shirley and Amy, obviously for your input um as we came back and forth in between sessions. I'd also like to thank my colleagues in the DEA for their trust and collaboration in this process. We we proposed some new ways of doing things and they were ready to jump in and and that collaboration together was really positive and productive. So thank you. I see Jeannie back there. I thought I saw a very similar. All right, he'll come back. Um, so um, we we talked about um earlier in the process that we went into negotiations, thinking strategically about what we were trying to accomplish. So um, a- as you've seen with lots of things I talk about in presentations, I talk about priorities, I talk about standards, I talk about pillars. And in this negotiation process, we had educational priorities that were forefront in our approach. We wanted to focus on recruitment and retention. And that led us and it was work that the board had been focused on strategically redesigning the salary schedule and really thinking in two places, looking at um redesigning the lower end of the salary schedule that would really assist us in recruiting teachers and putting us in a very positive strategic position for recruiting the very best teachers coming into our system. We also wanted to focus on our veteran teachers who bring tons of skill and experience and looking at how do we help to retain them and not lose them to other school districts. And we've seen that as something that's happened over the last couple of years. So we looked at the early steps and ways that we could increase compensation and restructure a bit so that we could be in a better place for recruitment. And we looked at the notion of rewarding the longevity of our valued teachers and using that as a structure that would help us in retention of teachers. And that was something that we went into with the plan and we were able to achieve that through this negotiation. We also focused on professional learning. Um, and while there may not be a dollar amount or a a giant change in the contract, but we built something that was agreed upon in the contract called in-service courses. And in-service courses allow us to do some really interesting things. Many of you have heard me say it before, our teachers need to be um supported and we need to provide them with experts to help them improve their craft. They always want to get better and serve their students in the best ways possible. We don't always get that support in our graduate programs. And so as a school district, it's incumbent upon us to build structures to continue to build that skill as our careers are evolving, as the educational space is evolving. So in-service courses, it's a structure that will be um run through the district where we are able to offer courses akin to graduate level courses that are district developed. So if we really want to focus, as we have on early literacy, we're going to develop courses that are credit bearing. They're they're Darian credits, but they're credit bearing. So a fifteen hour course would be a one Darian in-service credit. And these courses would help to build skill and support the professional growth of our teaching staff. And they could be taught internally, maybe teachers that teach, maybe administrators, it may be folks that we bring in from the outside that add value and help us to build that skill. But for teachers, for that um recruitment and retention piece is they can apply instead of only being able to move across the salary schedule, which advances one salary with graduate credits, they can accumulate numbers of our in-service Darian credits and apply them towards salary advancement. So it allows us to really design purposeful, topical, meaningful professional learning in a new structure that also supports our teachers in their career. And the other, and this is something that um we were looking to improve was ways to improve attendance overall in our system. And from an educational standpoint, the the more our teachers are with their children, the better outcomes for children. So we built what we feel is a sensible attendance incentive that we believe will aid in improving the educational program. The next in our priorities were the financial priorities. We wanted this contract to be sustainable. And in that, it was also again, that that word strategic, the redesign of the salary schedule was smoothing out the steps. So as the board knows, um, folks, as you accrue years in the system, your salary grows when you move from one step to the next. Um, in most salary schedules and um teacher uh contracts, the steps are variable depending on whatever history in the negotiations process. And and we approached the association and we said, it's really important to us to try and figure out a way to smooth out the steps so that there's a more, a better way to predict our salary growth from one year to the next. So you have multiple steps within a a dollar range and they grow for that number of years. So that gives Rich and the business office a better way to protect predict uh the immediate and the long-term growth of the salaries. And it's just a a sustainable model for us. And we also eliminated one lane uh as part of that restructure, which was helpful on the financial side as well. And the last um were the operational priorities. And you obviously see overlap the predictability for budgeting. So that's smoothing out and the restructuring of the salary schedule was a priority. And the attendance incentive, while yes, it's organization, it's it's educational, it's an organizational piece as well in that and an operational piece in covering classes and the shortage of substitutes and those challenges that we face in our system. So I I I'm really appreciative of the work of the association and their representatives and Barry and Matt and their collaboration through the process. And and again, Rich and Marge and and to all the board members on the committee. So any questions or?
I'll echo those. I'll echo those thanks to the DEA and their representatives for coming with a, to work with us with a collaborative mindset. To the administration for really living that collaboration and to the, all the members of the board who've served on the negotiating team. Thank you. This is excited. Are there questions? The board has been briefed on this, but if there are additional questions?
I would just echo or repeat, I think, what we've said in our earlier meeting. I think the negotiations timeframe was record in terms of three meetings or something like that. A lot of work in between. I understand that, especially from the Teachers Association. But I thought that was a great output of the basically administration acting as a mediator versus bringing an outside mediator and working until 3:00 AM on a Friday. So.
For sure.
Thanks. Thanks for the hard work on, at this table and Barry's group as well.
Okay. Thank you, John. So I'll call for a vote and then I think Barry wants to say something. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the contract agreement between the Darian Board of Education and the Darian Education Association for the period July 1st, 2026 to June 30th, 2029? That's Joanna seconded by Robin. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all. That's very exciting. We are thrilled to be able to support our teachers.
Great. Good evening. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the board for voting to approve the contract. The teachers are very excited to continue our work with Dr. Byrne. This is a recruitment and retention contract. We were able to accomplish some of the long-term goals that Dr. Byrne had mentioned at the boards, especially smoothing out the contract. But we were able to do it in a way where no one currently working here was hurt by it, by the way we restructured the grid. And we're also able to address some of the starting salaries. So hopefully, Marge, that makes your job a little bit easier. I'm bringing in the most talented teachers we have. Jill, I just want to thank you personally for helping to set the tone. I think what John just said, three meetings is unheard of, unprecedented. I think the way you just said, having administration act as mediator, I think that's true. And I think we worked well with the team. We've worked in collaboration. And I think both sides have a lot to be proud of with this contract. So Jill and John, as this is your last meeting, I know I have sometimes been a little bit of a pain in the past. I just want to thank you so much for everything you've done for this community, for our teachers and for our students. And I look forward to working with everybody else on the board going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry, and thank you for all you do. Here's the big lift as well. Okay, well, that's something really to celebrate. Thank you. Okay, next item. Okay, further discussion and possible action on the proposed fiscal year 27 budget meeting calendar. This is a second read.
So I didn't have anything further. I know we presented it out last week. And thank you to the members of the board who have been able to take the time and meet with different groups in the community, from the town side and from parent organizations, and those are still in process. I do think there was one change on the calendar, which was the removal in the conversations we've had so far. There was the removal of the, the calendar date that was scheduled for questions from the town bodies. And I believe.
It was in January, late January.
It was sometime in January. That, that's been removed from the final version based on the feedback and the conversations we've had.
Any, any further questions? And we don't, we took that item out, not because we don't anticipate that there won't be questions coming from the public or other members. But there were two goals in that. One is we changed the cadence of, of the meetings. So the way we would receive questions is different anyway. And two, we are focusing at, at a higher level. So we're anticipating potentially a little bit less in the way of questions than we have, may have received particularly a couple of years ago. Okay, may I have a motion to, oh, sorry, go ahead, Katie?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that there are some aspects of this that make me a little nervous. It's a, it's a really big change for us. And I do see that there's potential for it to be a really positive improvement. You know, I think that one of the, there, sometimes there are different ways of approaching the budget where it's just the bottom line and what that percent increases is what matters to some people. And that's never been what matters to me. I care a lot about what's in the budget and what the allocation is and, and how I feel that, that it's really. I think our responsibility is not just to get to the lowest number, but to really provide the resources that we need. So I, I want to call out that I do have a little apprehension about this. But as Joanna said earlier, the competence that you've shown in this role has earned my trust. So I am going to trust you in this process and with confidence that you'll lead us through the lengthy discussions that we might need to get to, to get to a good place that is a final result.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kate.
May I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 27 budget meeting calendar? That is Sarah seconded by Greg. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Look forward to seeing that from the cheap seats.
We could always save you a seat back there.
But don't do it right and not go up to the dais. I'm just kidding. Presentation and discussion on the fiscal year 27 budget forecast and instructional, operational and capital five-year priorities. Uh, there, just a quick note, we do have a facilities meeting tomorrow, of course, Thursday.
Thursday.
So the facilities group will be, team, whatever, will be going through that in detail subsequent to this meeting. Go ahead. Eric?
All right. So as I mentioned in the last presentation, the purpose of tonight is to give you an idea of where we are seeing things financially as we are in the, not in the early stages of building the budget, but the early stages of putting the numbers together. So I talked about how the program and the pillars are what we really focus on. But again, I mentioned it in my remarks earlier, the vision of the graduate is what we are here to realize. And it is through that work and through those pillars that I talked about, a program, class size, infrastructure and contractual obligations that we are building this budget. So cost course offerings, it's what our class sizes are going to be. It's our technology. It's our support staff. And I won't read through them all again, but the operating standards, these are really important. 10 points that as we as a system on the administrative side are building a budget, these are the standards that we are trying to achieve while we're doing that. Excellence in teaching and learning, continual structural improvement, maintaining class size guidelines, timely and relevant communication all throughout the process and ensuring that it's a fiscally responsible budget that provides long-term financial stability. So as we go through this process tonight, when I present the budget proposal on January 8th, you will see these, you should see these. It should be very clear that we are using these standards as we are building this budget. So what you're going to see tonight and Rich and Kevin will be assisting because we have different components. But we are taking, based on what we see right now in enrollment, what we see right now in our instructional needs, our operational needs and our capital needs. And those budget drivers are where we're going to speak from tonight. And while just to stress, this is not the full-blown budget proposal. We're still not there yet. This is if you wanted to hear the direction we're heading, this is the direction we're heading at this moment in time with the information that we have. And we know that some of that will be changing over the next couple of months as we lead into January 8th.
So looking at enrollment, these are tentative enrollment projections. We are waiting for the demographer report that will come to the board in November. But overall, elementary enrollment is expected to go up by 30 students. And those 30 students will result in two additional sections across the five schools, one at Hindley and one at Tokonik. And then if we move forward to the secondary level, the middle school is set to lose five students, so roughly flat from the current year. And then the high school is set to lose 26 students as some of those smaller cohorts are moving through the system. And so it's really flat enrollment. So the increase in the elementaries and the decrease of the secondaries leads to a net change of one student. Again, this will be updated when we get our demographer report next month.
So one of the things I assured the board last meeting when I was talking about the, the process is that we would be coming out tonight and talking about what our priorities were as we were beginning the development process. So when we think about the instructional priorities, we're thinking about the ongoing curriculum work that we're doing and publishing our curriculum in EduPlanet, the expanded secondary course offerings, as we heard about tonight, the collaborative curriculum design that is going across both general and special education and coherence and alignment, something we read a lot about in the text that we discussed tonight. But I know it's something that the, the strategic plan has focused on, that all of our textbooks, our resources and our professional learning initiatives are all in alignment and coherent. And when we're thinking about the professional learning to help us achieve that, you will see, I've talked about instructional coaching in the past, an instructional coaching model that will help us build capacity and strengthen our teachers' ability to deliver high-quality instruction. We will continue to focus through the development of this budget on our literacy outcomes. And that's our science of reading work and the OG Academy that is up and running this year and will continue next year. We will continue in our professional learning to focus on MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support framework that really helps us to support whole child development and achievement. And there are different levels of support through that in tiers one, two and three. And with all of these, we will learn much more about them as we go deeper into the budget process. Our professional learning will support how do we best as educators support students with challenging behaviors in the general education setting? And also as a system, really focusing on our transition assessments and our long-term, person-centered planning for our students that require transition plans and building our skill in that. When we think about our operational priorities, we really want to focus on our continued approach in improving communication and community engagement. We want to continue to examine across our system and across our structures possibilities for fiscal efficiencies and long-term sustainability through the support of the board and our security evaluation, a security audit that will be coming up, really looking to further enhance our safe and secure learning environments. And we'll be talking about, and this budget will be supporting physical infrastructure improvements. And you'll hear a lot tonight about all of the schools with the exception of Middlesex. Because as you all know, Middlesex is in the midst of a study with our architects, a facility study for significant work. And Kevin will speak a bit to that. And we'll also, through this budget, be addressing any deferrals in technology infrastructure that have been tabled over the last couple of years.
If we look to the forecast, the contract that was just recently approved is about $2.6 million and that's about 2.27% growth. We do have an administrator's contract in place, which is about $200,000. We have custodial and a maintenance contract in place, which is about $68,000. We do have some unsettled contracts, including the paraprofessionals, the secretaries, the nurses and unaffiliated staff. As we do in previous years, we do put a placeholder in the budget for pending settlements with those unions. And that's about a little over a half a million. In the budget, there'll be turnover savings, salary savings and salary schedule savings. So as we've seen this year, we did hit our, our turnover savings. We do budget what's called salary savings, which is the salaries not accrued for employees who have left the district, but we haven't filled the position. And then we've started to really garner a lot of savings with the paraprofessional new salary schedule. And so all told, we're expecting about $800,000 worth of offsets within budget. ESY based on the start date is about $88,000. And then as we've talked about in previous budgets, the wellness coordinator does have grant compression. So that position started off fully in a grant and then it went one-third operating budget, two-thirds grant. And this year it's two-thirds operating budget, one-third grant, and that grant will expire. And so it's another $22,000. So all told, those salaries will forecast at just over $3 million or a 2.39% increase. If we look at staffing changes, the two elementary positions that I mentioned earlier would be another $158,000. We have some middle school enrollment changes, which would be a reduction of $105,000. We have some small high school enrollment changes, which would be a savings of $93,000. And then anticipated special, special education staffing needs for another $103,000. We are potentially going to need two additional drivers and two additional Suburbans based on some placements in different locations. And if those occur, we'll, we'll have to go back to P and Z to amend the special permit in order to get those positions. So that will bring the total budget of staffing changes from $167,000. So now we get to about two and a half percent. And then if we go to the operating budget, teen talk is another grant compression category. The middle school teen talk was funded partially in the operating budget and partially in a grant. If that is to remain, then it would go all to the operating budget and it's about another $59,000. There is another unfunded mandate coming from the state. We will have to start composting starting July 1st. That'll be another $24,000 to the budget. DEA contract did include an additional allowance for tuition reimbursement. So that's $25,000. Software, contractual software increases, the Fitch lease, all told, that'll be about another $46,000. We do have reductions in special education. If you recall, earlier in the year, we did have some students returned to district and then we have some students who are aging out. And so when you see the budget, you'll see a reduction in added district tuition. You will see a loss of revenue and excess cost reimbursement. And that's because we're not paying those expenses for those tuition services. And so all told, that's a reduction of about $730,000. So the operating accounts should be reduced by about $570,000. If we look at fixed costs, first student bus transportation contract is set to go up about $288,000. Benefits, this includes medical, dental, vision, life insurance, 403B is about 1.1 million. One of the things we've looked at over the past five years is potentially moving to a self-insured model. In the past, it hasn't been right timing. I would say that this coming year is probably going to be a year we, we do recommend the transition to a self-insured model. And we'll talk about that when the budget deliberations go on. And these numbers will get refined as we look at claims and pharmacy claims. But all told, those accounts are about 1.1 million. And then we have some contractual increases with our KERMA policies. So total fixed is about $1.1 million. And then moving to equipment, Dr. Byrne talked about the technology deferrals. So it's about a half a million dollars. And then all the other revenue accounts excluding excess costs should be about an additional $200,000. The turkey bowl will be in Darian next year. So that's additional gate revenue. The advertising on the fields have expanded slightly, building rentals and field rentals, things like that. And so all told, that's another $200,000. So we're getting to about 4.3 million or 3.44%. Turnover to Dr. Byrne for some initiatives?
Sure. So I'm not a big fan of the word initiatives, but I do want to just raise the, a couple of things that I think are important structurally. We put a lot of effort into communication and improving that communication so far this year. Much of that work has happened with Cass and myself. And there are other areas that are really important that as I move into this position of permanent superintendent, I need to be focusing more on and having a communications professional. And not sure what that looks like, whether it's something for us to explore. And by January 8th, we'll have it fleshed out a little bit, whether it is to bring someone on staff who is a communications professional or whether it's that we contract with a communications organization that can provide that level of support. There's certainly plenty of communication that Cass and I will continue to do and it will work through with us as a team. But bringing that on and including that in the budget, I think is a very important one for us to achieve that goal of better engagement, more opportunities for understanding in the community. I've not been shy to ever talk about instructional coaching and supporting our teachers and improving our program. And in line with the really important work we're doing in early literacy, we've included in our calculations, three elementary literacy coaches who would work under the supervision of the Director of Elementary Education and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and be very strategic and targeted in their work and support with our teachers. Not knowing the outcome of our security audit, that is, if there's a request for proposal out on the street right now, we've included $50,000 for that level of support that we anticipate could be there at this moment in time. We may have more detail by the time we get to the full-blown budget proposal on January 8th. And the benefits cost is the benefits related. If those positions, the three coaches and the public information coordinator are staff members of ours, those would be the associated benefits. So what you're looking at is a total cost in those initiatives of $709,999, which brings us.
So all told, when we look at salaries, operating fixed revenue and potential initiatives, just over $5 million or a 4% forecasted increase for next year.
So maybe before we jump into capital, that was a lot. We could open up to any questions. Greg?
Yeah, this is really helpful. Thanks for going through all of it. I just have a couple of quick ones, and I don't know if like tonight is the time to talk into detail, but I am looking forward to some of the follow-up conversations around some of these topics. Mine were on benefits. I know we've talked about the self-insured model in the past. Just it would be good to understand the thought process going forward, you know, the million-dollar increase. Is that a one-time thing? Is that expected to go up and then come down? Like, are there some like setup non-recurring costs in there that we should be thinking about?
Um, I can't sure. I'll answer now. So when you are self-insured, you have to create what's called a corridor. And so you have maximum exposure of claims, and typically you'll set up at what? Two types of stop-loss insurance. One is individual stop-loss insurance. So we're looking at $250,000 as that level for individual stop-loss insurance. And then aggregate stop-loss, which is the total pool, which is about 20% of the total pool of expected claims. One of the startup costs that you have is to build a reserve, because obviously it's not completely predictable what you'll end up paying. And so you want to have a little bit of reserve in an internal services fund to protect against not quite that 20% level, but if maybe if you're over 1% or 2% or 3% that you have that cushion. So that is a little bit of a startup cost. The rest will depend on claims and then rebates that we would get in lieu of being fully insured. And so right now, Anthem, who is our provider, is getting rebates directly for certain things. Those rebates now come directly to the Board of Ed if you're self-insured. So in the first year, you're only typically going to get about half of what you normally would get because you have that lag in claims. And so we're working with our insurance consultants, and it's going to be about probably $600,000 in rebates in that first year. You'd actually see that grow as you would get into that second year. And those rebates will help offset the growing cost of pharmacy claims. And so one of the reasons we didn't do self-insured in the past, our medical claims were very high, and we had very high fluctuation in medical claims. Those have started to improve. What has not improved and has actually gone a worse direction is the pharmacy claims. Our pharmacy claims have more than doubled annually. We went from about $2 million in pharmacy claims to about $4 million in pharmacy claims. A lot of that is driven by like the new GLP-1s. If you think about one person, the cost is probably about $15,000 for one person to be on it for a year. And then if you extrapolate that over hundreds of employees, you're talking millions of dollars. So we would start getting those RX rebates in exchange. And so you're seeing.
We will go, sorry, Richard, with all of these, we'll have completed the modeling by the time Rich does his full operations presentation later on in the year. Sorry.
And then the benefit long term is in those years where you have better-than-expected claims, you're building up reserves, right? And so you don't want to carry too much reserves, just like you don't want to carry too much reserves in a food service fund. You can start to play with those reserves to mitigate costs growing in the future.
So you're doing the right thing in terms of doing a long-term analysis of cost benefits of doing this and, you know, how it's going to impact us going forward. It's great. So thank you. And my other one, just quickly on the literacy coaches, which I think is an interesting idea. Is there any offset there in terms of like professional learning or things like that where now they're in place?
The big offset for us would wouldn't be a dollar amount. It would be in calendar. So we have.
Equally as valuable.
Yeah, because we have a lot of time that we dedicated where we have early releases and things like that for the literacy work. This will enable coaches to work side-by-side in classrooms with teachers during the school day with their kids. And that will be a significant impact. So it doesn't have a dollar amount on it, but in terms of instructional impact and time for children, it's a huge impact.
Thank you.
Joanna?
Um, the FTE changes at the middle school and the high school, are those one individuals or are those like pieces of different places?
Pieces of different things, and we do think that there's a significant chunk of both of those pieces that are through attrition. So it's, and there's no program elimination as part of that.
Great, thank you.
So it retains all of our programs.
Blessings. Excuse me. Thank you. Okay, I think you're up, Kevin.
All right. So as you heard, Rich and Dr. Burn already mentioned, excuse me, what you don't see here is any capital allocation for Middlesex Middle School. We spent a good chunk of the summer analyzing all the building systems, which are now coming in at almost 25 years old. And some of them are in need of replacement. Those are your boilers, your roof, implementing some sort of HVAC central air system, which we don't currently have. Extrapolating from what we know from HHR and some modern day square foot pricing, we're anywhere in the ballpark of, you know, 35 to 45 million without doing any sort of addition to the space or the building. So just to not steal the thunder from KGND, they'll present next month, but those are kind of some of the rough dollar amounts that we're looking at based on what we're seeing with Henley Homes and Royal.
So just repeat that again, please. I think it's important for people to understand. Just updating the systems.
Correct.
Correct, is 35 to 40, and that's without doing anything else in the building.
Right.
And there probably are other building needs, but KGND is going to come back and present what those might be.
That's right. We've had a number of meetings over the summer with Mr. Mullis, myself, Dr. Burn attended, walking the roofs, every square foot of the school and understanding the needs of the building and the teachers. And that's what we're looking at at the moment.
Okay. And John Zagroski used at his presentation at the RTM a $75 million number from you.
Yeah, they've given us, and I shared that with the first selectmen, they've given us a range of somewhere between if we did additions and auditorium and sort of the all-in package would be in the 75 to 95 million dollar range. Before we start looking at what are the things that are the highest priority.
So of course, that number is just a guess at this point, depending on what the board wants to do and what you all recommend.
Yeah. Our next step is KGND will present it out to us, and then we'll go through a process to look at what are, how do we best prioritize what's needed? What are the must-haves? What are the things that programmatically make a lot of sense that may not be a critical system? But that we need for the program, the building is designed for, I think, 900 students. And we're looking at enrollment projections of upwards of 1,200 students. So we have to address those pieces through those deliberations, and then we'll come up with a recommended package to the board.
Thank you.
As you're thinking through those options at middle school, like it would be good to understand as well, just like like if you're trying to prioritize what you're going to do with it versus if you just do the high priority items now, like how soon do you then have to address the next items? And then you're doing two disruptions for the students and the teachers and everybody else versus just one and getting it all done in one time? That would be helpful to understand your insight there.
Well, definitely.
So the next thing you'll notice on the capital improvement plan, the biggest driver here is paving, milling and paving of our asphalt parking areas. This would make the third consecutive fiscal year that we're tackling some sort of paving. Started two years ago with the middle school bus loop and parking lot. Phase one of the high school was last summer. Phase two is reflected here. Everything else is replacement cycles, whether it's the walkie-talkies used in the buildings. Vehicles for the fleet are out of district. Placement, you know, that's all standard issue replacement cycle equipment.
Okay. Again, facilities will go through this in detail, but go ahead.
Do we already have? I know it's in the calendar. Can we just repeat when the tour of schools was so we can see these things?
Saturday, December 6th.
December 6th.
And here is just another view looking at the plan in its entirety out of five fiscal years and how the the prices come in. All the projects carry an escalation for whichever fiscal year they're slated to take place in.
Prior to this, you were carrying dollars in there, right, for the middle school roof, which you've removed?
So we show those as zero, assuming that the presentation and that the plan forward is to tackle a large capital project. If the board does not decide to go that route, those numbers would have to come back into here.
Any other questions?
Could you just repeat the the number that you were verbally talking about for Middlesex of just the systems improvement?
Sure. So roofs, electrical upgrades to handle some sort of HVAC system, new boilers, things of that nature, roughly $200 a square foot or 35 to 45 million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And just, it's important to note, that's in, I think, fiscal year 27 or 28 numbers. We're carrying an escalation for that as well, because this would obviously have to be designed, approved by the state. That takes time, and it wouldn't happen today.
Thank you. John?
So this rollout or this preview is new to us. I know you're fine-tuning some numbers based on enrollment and some other things that are coming back at you, but are you basically saying you're not going to come any surprises around programmatic things, like the big things are laid out now? It's just a fine tune?
Yeah.
You had a nickname? Your previous role, I think it was Dr. No Fun? Got Dr. No Surprise? This is now, all joking aside, this is, this is pretty awesome. I think in terms of communicating the budget to the community, I mean, you've set the groundwork, and it's going to make it tremendously easier for the board. Well, it's a testament to the team here, Rich and his department, and Marge and the principals, Shirley and Amy, everybody's been working really hard, looking carefully at their programs. But the reality is that with any kind of initiatives or work, I mean, the things that we need to do are the things that we should be doing for the long haul. And so there shouldn't be new things that we're just layering on, unless there is something that is a surprise that we all know about early on and we're talking about publicly. But it goes from the reduction side too also.
Correct.
So you've been fine tuning that a long way. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we've been working on getting a forecast together. This is a great model. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. With that, we will move on to the presentation of the board member handbook. This is just on for presentation. The purpose of tonight is just to touch on what the process was. You know, talk about some of the sources. This is meant to be a living document. Right now, the board is just taking a look at it, that new board members can use it as they come on and see how it works. And then you all as a board can take a look at it again at whatever cadence you think is appropriate and decide if there's anything that you want to change about it. So that's it's here. Katie, would you like to, you've captained a lot of this. Would you like to add anything or?
So this is not, I mean, to my knowledge, this is not something that we've ever had before. And, you know, as we read in the governance core, this is an important tool for board members. So I'm hoping that this really helps us with some of that coherence piece and, you know, giving us that that one place to serve as a reference to go back for. So these are hard copies, and as Jill said, it's going to be a living document. I already gave Cass a few minor edits. And, you know, as we have a new iteration of the board, very soon, that will start to change as well. We also plan to have this digitally, which will be a huge resource for us to be able to just quickly pull it up. And I think that, you know, as we move forward with, I know it's not called this cast, but what's the new board docs that we talked about earlier? What? I'm sorry, what did she say? Diligent community, yes. But when we have that online platform where it's very easy to find things, I think that that will sort of enter us into a new era where we just have quick resources so that we can be on the same page. So I would just say, in the spirit of it being a living document, you know, as you look through this or as things come up, if there's something that you think is missing or that needs to change, you know, let's just all kind of commit to working on that.
And we have your few edits, and we have one new appendix, which was a legal question that the board brought around fiduciary responsibility. So that will be added as well in the next couple of days.
Fantastic. I'm also working on a chair handbook, which will be nowhere near the scope or scale of this. I'll get it done before I sunset, but it just wasn't ready for this evening, and it's it's much more high level, but just a small, small companion. Dennis and then Robin.
So thank you, Katie, for all the work you did doing this and developing it and then having the initiative to do so. I guess my main question is, who's the owner of this document? Is it all of us? Is it the policy chair? Or is it, I mean, who, how do we make make sure that the information is correct? And if it's not, who's going to own the revisions and that?
I think the board as a collective is the owner of it. I think it's important that someone does spearhead the work so that if there are questions and discussions, they could lead that conversation, but I think it's a collective document.
Okay.
And then I don't know if this was part of your question, but Cass has been the one that's actually been like making the edits and updates, so which I think makes the most sense also, that it lives with her and one person.
Just making sure, if we don't have an owner, I feel it's going to get just lost. So I want to have one owner.
Robin?
Thank you. I agree with Dennis's comment, and I wanted to thank Katie also, because this is a huge amount of work, and it is a clear need that we have not had before, and especially given this, the governance book that we've all read. It's extremely timely. And the one of the questions that I do have is, to the extent that it is a living document, the board, the book is talking about the board discussing and creating protocols and norms, which it looked to me were actually kind of on a couple of the pages here in terms of the board manner and things that you do. So I don't know what the cadence would be of if or when we might have those kinds of discussions to, you know, once we do have new board members to kind of all agree on what are the protocols that we that we all are are committing to adhere to, because as the book is saying, that discussion alone is a really valuable kind of a process to go through so that everyone has buy-in. And I really just give you a lot of credit. That'll be a really great tool. So it's a great start.
So I think that'll be the cadence will be a little bit up to you as a board. I think that if you find something that comes up on the sooner side that you want to adjust, I would, but I would suggest living with it for a little while and seeing how it works. And then, and then thinking about what else you want to think about. Thank you also, Dr. Burn, to you for, you pulled in some of the governance content that's in here from your other handbook. So Katie's been very patient as we've done this over a long period of time.
And I do think the the protocols piece is something that that we'll need to have some of those discussions not long after reorganization this spring. So we just have to sort of strategize what that looks like.
And if I could just add to that, I would also say that the first page is a letter from the chair, and this kind of functions one as a welcome, but also that kind of expresses some preferences in terms of communication styles and norms outside of, you know, the responsibilities that we have. So I would imagine that a next first step would also be that the new chair would kind of look at this as well and begin to develop their own practices with the board.
I think it'd be helpful to have John build new eyes on this, who know what's missing, what doesn't make sense, what is, because, you know, we kind of all live this, but what what doesn't make sense is good.
Okay. With that, there's no action here. It's just, it exists now, and it's usable. It'll be ready for the 11th, or sorry, be ready for the fourth. But their orientation is the 11th, correct? Yeah. Okay. Let's move on to the acceptance of the completed Ox Ridge Elementary School Project Connecticut Department of Administrative Services number 20 D A S Y 035117 and 1020. This is just a formality, correct? But it's pretty exciting.
Yes, yes. Yep.
So Jill, sorry, could I just say one thing? Sure. Thank you. So just as a kind of a testament to the dedication that it takes for these projects that are huge and that come with a really, really hefty price tag. I just want to especially, I don't know if Kevin's still here. So I was on the Ox Ridge Building Committee, and it was formed in 2019. And we're just now doing the completion. And honestly, I felt like I was working towards that committee for several years before, advocating and having the kind of conversations that we're about to enter into for middle school. So I just wanted to highlight really the the long span of time and dedication that honestly, so many people across this town put into a project like that.
That's true. You see it for HHR and even the little things like the cafeteria. And so I'm glad you guys are taking up the middle school from here. And it is that, you know, these building committees are run outside of the Board of Ed. There is always a Board of Ed member on them, but they're run by. Always a Board of Ed member on them, but they're they're run by uh the town. And so it is a big, it's a big lift and it it takes a lot of cooperation between uh entities to make them really successful. So our thanks to all the folks. But you go on the Ox Ridge Building Committee, but those who serve. Um, okay, with that, I will have a motion that the Darian Board of Education accepts the Ox Ridge Elementary School Project. Connecticut Department of Administrative Services number twenty D A S Y zero three five one one seven N ten twenty as complete. Sarah moves, John seconds. Sorry, Katie, you should have seconded that. That's unanimous. Okay. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's Dennis seconded by Robin. And if anybody has questions or comments.
Are you going to run through them like?
What they are. There's the approval of the minutes, the September twenty twenty five financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers. Uh, which John, you all are recommending, were there transfers?
There were no transfers. Uh, we had a, we had a finance committee meeting uh last week, but given the late nature. All that we covered in great detail, I guess, the surplus that we're running uh this year.
Okay.
Year fiscal year.
Thank you. Uh, we have twenty five, twenty six middle school, middle school and Darian High School special field trips. Any other board committee reports and a personnel report. Okay, so it's it's firsted and seconded. Any other comments or questions that'll take a motion to approve? That's unanimous. Thank you. Follow up action items. I don't think we have any from this evening. Robin.
I have an action item that we would like to recognize our two retiring board members and I think Cass has some. Things and we have some statements we would love to make.
Thank you.
Oh, cheers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so we're going to divide this up. Um, but first of all, I want to thank both of you and I think um, I'm going to speak. To Jill first and then um we will have a tribute to John as well. Um, Jill, I would like to personally thank you for your significant leadership, serving the Darian school, students and community. As Chair of the Darian Board of Education and over the past nine years. That you have served on the Board of Ed, you have achieved significant accomplishments to help support and enhance Darian schools. You helped develop and implement the board's current strategic plan, which helped to set long term goals that were needed to best serve our students and schools. During and after the COVID pandemic. Additionally, in your role as Chair of the Henley Homes Royal Building Committee and as Chair of the Darian High School Building Committee. You led the complex renovations of three of our elementary schools as well as the renovation of the of the Darian High School cafeteria. But just as importantly, in your role as Board of Ed Chair over the past two years. You have also worked to enhance our ongoing partnership with other town governing bodies. So that together, our town leadership can collectively focus on meeting the needs of our schools and broader Darian community. Additionally, you have also served the Darian community in numerous other leadership positions, including trustee of the Darian Library. As co-chair of the Council of Darian School Parents and volunteering on the Thriving Youth Task Force for the Community Fund of Darian. On a more personal note, in the twelve years that I have known and worked closely with you. You have consistently shown yourself to be a thoughtful, empathetic and proactive communicator. Who listens to and is respectful of the values and priorities of our students, parents, school staff. Fellow board members and Darian community. Most importantly, you're passionate about education and generally genuinely care. About meeting the needs of all of our students. You will be missed here at thirty five Leroy in our regularly scheduled upcoming forty seven meetings. Together on Tuesday nights and early Thursday mornings. Please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude for the countless hours that you have personally spent over these past nine years. Outside of our forty seven regularly scheduled meetings. Working on behalf of our students and schools, we wish you all the very best in your future endeavors. And I know that you're probably going to be recruited for some other town bodies, probably in the in the future coming years, but thank you for your service.
Thank you, Rob.
I would like to echo and and Jill, you're you're one of the most, and Robin touched on some of the words empathetic and and intelligent people I know. And it was a pleasure to serve with you. But I am here to talk about John Seeny. John Seeny has served two terms or six years on Board of Education. Wow, what a wild six years. When he joined the board, we had just hired a new superintendent, coming full circle, Dr. Adley in the summer of twenty nineteen. John was the former Chair of Planning and Zoning Committee and quickly got up to speed on Board of Education Matters. And then just six months later, the world literally stopped. COVID happened and education in person was halted. We had to scramble and try to determine how to educate children with social distancing. Plexiglas, Zoom, all of which we did not have funds allocated. John was instrumental in shaping those discussions, excuse me, dis shaping those discussions of priorities. And the mechanisms of how to evaluate and determine the best course of action moving forward. No one person on the board determines the decisions of the board. It is the collective. But John has been instrumental in many ways the district operates today. I would like to share three. Working better with town bodies, the process and the cadence of how we work through our budgets and working on a negotiation and, sorry. And working on the negotiation committee to work on the contracts with the various stakeholders that the district employs. These three elements have placed the district in good financial situation. And offers us better recruiting and retention of staff standing today and hopefully into the future as well. On a personal note, I want to thank John for his counsel, his calmness, his thoughtful texts and comments over the years. John has spoken that he hopes the district someday will be pedaling downhill and I wish for you that in the next endeavor that you're a little bit of pedal downhill. None of us sit up here alone. We have support from our families at home. I want to thank John's wife over of over twenty five years, Michelle, and John's three boys, Luke, Connor and Jake, for giving up, giving us the chance to interact with him for the last six years. John has encompassed everything you want in a board member. He is prepared, has a strong moral compass and belief system. But is willing to compromise to do what is best for the students of Darian. Darian is a better community because of you, John. You will be, you will be missed. Thanks for your service.
Thank you all for the comments. Those are very kind. We appreciate it. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Public comment. Thank you. Thank God somebody's paying attention.
If anybody would like to participate, please approach the podium and wait to be recognized. Please state your name and address for the record and note that you all have up to three minutes to come.
Hi, I'm Amy Daniels, eighty three Locust Hill Road. Um, I'm the Executive Director of the Depot Youth Center, a parent um with kids. Um, a recent graduate and a ninth grade daughter, and I have no prepared statements. Um, I'm wearing all the hats today. I know that as soon as the press release goes out tomorrow announcing the appointment of Dr. Byrne, I wish I could be. Oh, I wanted to be a fly on the wall because I know that there'd be a big, big yahoo from all the corners of Darian. So congratulations, we're thrilled to be able to keep you here and work with you. I've also been to many, many board meetings, but I have to say I haven't been to a BOA, uh, BOE meeting in a bit. And I am so inspired and energized by the way that you guys came together tonight. And and transparently talked about what some of the issues are and yeah, a book club. I love a book club. So really talking about the book and and we're all learners, right? We're all trying to get better. At at what we do and what we bring to the table and how we work with others. Um, so I applaud you all. I want to say, even though John is a Lehigh guy and I'm a proud Lafayette alumni. I very much appreciate the way that you've served our community and especially our children. Um, teachers and staff the past six years, so thank you. And to Jill, I love you. Um, you are such an inspiration to all who know you, the way that you carry yourself. Your your empathy, the thoughtful way that you approach all the things. And you're not going anywhere because we're all going to continue to hit you up and rely on you and um, use your services for good as you always do. So um, thank you for everything you've given our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I can't adjourn. Anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn. John seconded by Sarah. That's unanimous. We're adjourned.